...by George Anderson.
...the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Please be advised that this open meeting is being recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available to online video on demand by viewing at wrpsrockland.com. But in 24 hours of its conclusion, as our other recently recorded meeting and community events, please go to wrpsrockland.com for relevant information. Anyone here from the youth commission? Okay, let's just bypass that and go with the number two, the common law articles. Let me get the lawyer and the... Ronald?
Yes. I'd like to bring in Judge Anderson and Michael Ronberg. Each of them are going to talk about some different articles. And as you know, that... My name is Ron Ken. Article 57, 52, 53, and 54. Do you have a copy of that, of those articles?
Actually, the numbers have changed.
Okay. You have those in front of you because I have copies of them.
We don't have copies of these articles.
Okay. So we'll meet that, so. Yeah, does it have the old numbers on it? I think they have extra ones, stuff like that, so. So my reference is going to be to the paper, since I don't have the new numbers, so my references will be to the paper, I passed out to you. And to start off, I would say 53 is with Ron. 53 was planned that the assessor had, that was to go to Conservation Commission. The card did not say it was in Conservation Commission. So we put it in, then we had a meeting with her, and she said, "Well, I'm sorry," but... She looked at the legal work, and she said, "Oh, change that in the Conservation Commission, under the Office of Conservation Commission." So we withdrew that. And 57, I'll have Judge talk about 57.
Fifty-seven.
And 52. Excuse me, 51 and 52.
You want to go first, Judge?
Judge, I have it right here.
So the first one's howling away, and then the second one is airport park drive, right?
I had it.
You want to go first?
I don't care, I just don't... Okay, since Judge has got it, Michael?
Which one is 57?
51.
Oh, 51.
51, I'm sorry.
Okay. Oh, this is it, okay. Okay, I got it.
Is there a hundred meter?
I got the idea.
Yep.
Yep.
I could speak about it, but I just need a...
I'll get up and talk to you, but the thing is with this... This is a piece of land that was given to the Conservation Commission 23 years ago. It was deeded to the Conservation Commission. I have the deed right here. Now, you people, I guess somebody asked a question, where exactly is it? That correct me. And I'll show you back to where it is. Apparently, it was a little confusing because I guess when I talked to Mr. Geldman, he said, "Why is there two assessors' maps on this? And there's three on two different properties?" It is kind of weird, but it's what it is and what it is. Okay, here we go. Let's see if I can expose this to you. This sheet? Where it goes is really confusing. Here's the deal. This is the actual deed, it's copied. If you're going to look it up, I'll take this off. This is what it is. It goes through two sheets because it's large, okay? Go this way, because this is what it is. This was put together by Bill Beachill, the real partners. What was this going here? This was donated by Beachill New Department. The deed is there, it was given to the town...
When year was that?
1996.
Yeah, what were you doing?
The deed is there, and I said, "No," just given to the town, to the Conservation Commission.
Right.
And it should technically be put in perpetuity. It's all wetlands, all through here. It takes...
It's all the land of vineyards.
French screen, it takes sewage, potment, water, everything off of all the drainage, off of Beachill, and everything goes down.
This is the work that comes and goes behind this.
It's the land that wasn't developed, wasn't able to be developed.
This is Beachill, and actually, I think we have a couple pieces of land here if I look at those maps down there, these are a couple of small...
They're all wetlands.
Yeah, right.
They're all wetlands. I don't think Beachill Limited Partners would have given away anything that would have been usable.
No.
They got their thing out of it when they built Brazos Province. But that's the whole point with it, so, you know.
So this has already been deeded over?
It's already been deeded over. It's been here for 23 years.
What do you need from us?
What we need is to put this in and out of this... I've actually got the article. We want to put it in and put it under perpetuity. This is all flood area.
Yeah, right.
You get big storms, it's flood, it's just dust, okay?
So if it's already deeded over for conservation?
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if it's deeded or not, it has to be passed by town meeting.
Okay.
And that's the problem, it has to be done.
It's just the legal thing.
It's an oversight, it's an oversight.
I didn't pick this up until three years ago. I've been tracking lands, conservation land in this town for three, five years.
So this is really just housekeeping?
All of these are housekeeping? Or maybe it was more exceptional?
Is that acceptable?
I don't know.
Yeah, that works, it makes sense, it makes plenty of sense.
Can you tell the legal counsel make sure that a deed that says exactly what, how it's supposed to be in terms of how being strictly locked in conservation land, if that makes any sense?
Which one is the only questions on it? Because if the other ones are just housekeeping exercises, I think we're willing to go ahead.
Well, let's get to go down, I would like to go with 52, if you want it. This is a town park. Judge, you're going to speak on 52, this town forest?
Yeah, the town forest one? Yeah, granted.
Oh, please, Judge, let's...
This is simple, I hope. The piece is in what? Rocky? And I'll show it to you, it goes from here down to here. It's 1.568, it's within the boundaries of the town forest, okay?
Yeah.
I never knew this until three years ago. I thought it was always part of the original piece of the town forest. Come to find out, no, it wasn't, it was taken from tax title back in 1944. I think Farmer John probably had a woodlot down there in the 1920s who ever used it, and it just sat there and sat there, so the town took it. I thought it was always part of the original, but that's all that is, it's 1.56. We use it for flood storage, that's what that whole thing is about. And if you look at this very simply, I have seen water come right up to the filing that we built back there 17 years ago. It comes in, it is all flooding, but we really need to keep that. It's important.
So it's already town, it's...
It's already taken by town.
It's taken by the town anyway, it's just...
The only issue I have with that is that, as long as we are the owner, if we designate conservation land, if we can't, if we use other land in town to build something, we have to give some sort of a figure six to one or whatever, and conservation land, if we build a...
Yeah, so you couldn't dig in a swamp to...
We're not going to dig there, but we can designate that area conservation land at that time and use it to our advantage, rather than if we just turn it over now, which I'm not really against, but if we turn it over now, then the town can't use it if we built some of our open space someplace, you have to, isn't there some sort of a deal, you have to swap?
So on wetlands, it's two to one?
I understand.
But you have to...
Oh, yeah, you own it. So we don't really have to declare it until such a time as, you know, we have to.
That would be a question, I'm not sure I can answer it.
So...
I mean, I'm not against, you know, you guys having the land and saying this part of the park is...
It's not our land, it's town land.
So why do we need to make it into conservation? Is there some sort of a...
If it's tax type land, it's under the purview of the tax collector, so, I mean, there's a duty to, gentlemen, there's a duty to try to auction that for the town to recoup the money it lost on the taxes, that's why I took the land. This is more of a policy question for you, I can't tell you, but it's better to decide to do something with it, because as of right now, it's not owned by the town or under conservation, it's still under the purview of the tax, taxes, etc.
So by putting it under the conservation? What's the answer, what do you think?
Could be restricted, and then it would be spoiled anyway, nothing's going to be built.
No, I don't think you could, because I understand the wetland act, if you take, if you want to fill in a wetland, you have permission, then you have to reduplicate that wetland at a larger base, is it two to one?
Yep.
So I don't think you could do it on land that's already wet. You'd have to find dry land to make it.
And make it, yes.
But you have to make that wetland designation adjacent to where you make it not? No, right, so if that's the case, why do we have, why do we, in a hurry to make it conservation land, don't we all own it?
Because it's similar to the other articles, it's still like, it can be viewed as like a housekeeping issue where the land is underneath someone's, it shouldn't be...
Because it's still in tax title, so it's technically known by the town.
Yeah. Because then there would be a...
It works for me.
Mr. Chairman, I understand a point that you were trying to make before, but the, at the swap ratio on taking something out of open space into some sort of an active use, the replication ratio is one to one.
One to one?
On that, versus, you know, wetland replications. The wetland replication business is two for one, but in terms of open space for, you know, legally, it's a one to one.
We're simply housekeeping, I'm really not against it, I just want to make sure that we're not shortchanging our position as far as...
Eliminating...
Use that, well, as long as it doesn't impact, that's all I really care about.
Can I explain something?
You got to 6:30, so, can I just tell you something very quickly?
Very quickly. See this piece of land up here? It's 2.338, belongs to you people.
Right.
It's part of the town park.
Right.
You can do what you want with it, I suppose, but as it is wetland, rock, whatever.
So is that something to be transferring, that piece too?
I'm not transferring, I can't do that.
Not transferring?
That's how you people, but I'm just saying, that's something that's there, you need to understand what it is. The thing is, it belongs to the town, it's under your control. The point being is, this was given to the town by the Department of the Interior back in 2004. Now, they said, "You have to keep this for casual recreation and for..."
Yeah.
So I said, "You know, that's what it is, I don't know what you want to do with that, I just want to explain that to you so you know." That period, you can, you know...
So tell me, go on with the one that...
This, this is going to be, I remember it has on this map. This is Exhibit B for this last article.
This is Article 53?
This is Article 53, I told you it was taken out of the...
All right, so 54.
It is 54, and from this article is Mike Ronberg, and he'll come up with the...
This is a parcel that was in question a few years ago at town meeting.
Yes. So we, you know, so we put this article in again, Mike Ronberg, put this article in again, since the town meeting last year, Cassa Development coming to do some development of Dalahan Parkway, and they had to negotiate with the state Natural Heritage people to see where they wanted to put their buildings, because it's in an area that's protected because there's rare species in there. So they kind of negotiated, I have the maps, probably a better map of where their buildings are going, but it had nothing to do with us, they negotiated with the state, and they're going to preserve the land, the north side of the Parkway, and they're going to preserve that and build on the south side of the Parkway as mitigation, so, may I approach the bench? This will show you the buildings a little bit more, I don't have the full four acres on this, but... So this, this is the four acres right here, but this is where they're building to go, and so that they can, that was all mitigated out, so this is the four acres right up in this corner right here.
Yep.
The other map you have will show, so basically, the land today is, this was a proposal that's in front of the executive office in environmental affairs right now, it's been preliminary approved, they just have to go through the final details, so they can't build anything on, Cassa Development can't build anything until this is gone through. So basically, that 3.91 acres that we were at town meeting with last year, maybe the year before, is basically landlocked now by conservation restriction land, so you can't do anything with it at this point, so we've got it forwarded in as an article for this year, so.
So there's no, oh, you can't get to that piece of property from Airport Park Drive, then?
It'll be landlocked totally. So I gave you the color pictures because, well, maybe this is the only one I have of these, but you can, you can basically see...
It almost shows, they put a drive over into that, that's what it looks like, that's what I...
Yeah, but technically, it's Spence property. This is the, this is the four acres, 3.9, and it's landlocked all the way around, this is already conservation restriction area from many years ago when they built the Parkway.
Yep.
And so this is the rest of the Spence property on the north side, so they opted to develop the south side of the Parkway and turn all this over as conservation restriction, so that's what's going on with that, that's been the negotiation, mitigation of, almost a year now.
What's that going to be saying, mitigation, will be changed to conservation and even add existing buildings on it?
The 3.9 acres?
Yeah.
Well, that's the article, so we can give it to the conservation...
I just have a quick progress question for the town meeting, can we vote as a board not to recommend an article that's been proposed?
Yeah, of course we can, absolutely.
Oh, so on this piece of property, I mean, I understand that the previous two articles were more like housekeeping things, but because of the development of potential in that area, like, I understand based on interpretation of this map that it may or may not be landlocked now, but I'm, I'm not at a point, and I don't think the town should be at a point, oh, you know, to, especially with the fact that we as a town don't own any land right now, like, that's part of our issue right now, and number two, oh, based on the fact that we're going to be, oh, starting like a master plan process that we can maybe hypothetically envision, oh, something for that area, and also, I just, with the development potential there, I think it would almost be irresponsible for the town, oh, to place a restriction on the, our piece of property at this point.
Mike, I agree with you, particularly with the start of the master plan coming up, which part of that is, you know, we're hoping to have members from the conservation on there, but it's to look at everything within the town. You know, part of that process is hopefully designated some conservation land through here, but I, to Mike's point, I think with that coming up, I think we would be shortsighted to do it now without going through the full process and doing it correctly and having all the information.
So if I can bring up a couple of points?
Sure.
One, that particular property, I've heard at the town meeting over the years, it's probably 50% wetlands, and there's about five runoff pools in there, so there's a lot of protection in that 3.9, so maximum, maybe two acres out of that, but if, I suppose we could wait till next year, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter to me at all, because, I mean, if you want to, you know, approach the state BOEA now at this point, you're going to be holding up the Cassa Development project, because they can't do, they can't put shovel in until this is all done, and the lawyers have been working on it for quite some time right now, so if you want to wait till next year, it's fine to me, but I'm just, I'm just letting you know that it's preliminary been approved, any conservation restriction land that is kind of mandated by the state, heritage people has to go to the executive office of environmental affairs, their lawyers to, you know, straighten everything out, and it's gone to that point, and, you know, I think, I know Cassa's already put hay bales out all around their property out there to start this spring, so...
This is just really kind of late in the process to be informing us that, you know, something that we already discussed last year and the year before about the town not giving up that property because it could be valuable to the town and its location is key to that. So I mean, so, you know, you're coming in and telling, "Well, there's all these people working on this project," well...
If I may, if I may, Cassa Development, the three rings, just passed all the boards, and they negotiated with Natural Heritage, and Natural Heritage put these things around the park.
How do we find out about, a couple weeks before a town meeting, when there's something going on for how long, and yet we just find out about... You want us to make a decision tonight based on something that we already rejected a year ago, so now, in order for us to do anything new on this, we have to go through a process where you can verify all that's going on?
I'm also struggling how this, how this piece of property...
It's going to hold up that.
Is it going to hold up that, then, do not, how are they...
I can explain that more if you want, I'm sorry. So for them to put a shovel in the ground, while this was Spence property at one point, the north end and south side, and actually, it was all Spence, and then the Parkway went through the middle of it, so it gets split up. So, because it's sort of habitat area, the state makes them put, they built so much, they have to like, put like three times out of them, I believe it's three times, into a conservation restriction, so for them to put their buildings on the south side of the Parkway...
So they need this acreage to be in them?
Exactly, so, and that was game, and they write down, they pay, so last year, last year, we didn't put an article in to put it in conservation, last year there was an article in, I think the town administrator put it in to sell the land or lease it.
Yep.
So it wasn't a matter of conservation at that point, but this year, because it's landlocked, you know, 90% landlocked right now, this is why we put it, we just thought we'd put it in conservation this year, so, you know, if you want to wait a year, it's fine with me, but I don't...
I just think we should wait and do this.
But I think we also don't mind all the progress on this project.
But we as a town have not heard...
So here's the thing, at the end of the day, if they need to, if they need to come up with three or four acres of conservation land? There's not areas to find it, it's not going to hold it up.
Well, I think we should also just go out and take all the project, the property itself, I mean, the map is all the different actual, the properties made of it.
Sure, I take it, I'm...
I'll give you a moment.
We can lock on this property, but we can't lock on the property that's privately owned, because unless we have permission...
No, this isn't the ring's property.
No, no, but is it adjacent to the...
This isn't adjacent to the ring.
We can go from Airport Park Drive.
So they just, they just need to come up with a certain amount of acreage?
Yeah, it's already all figured out right down the square foot.
Yep, so this is just a...
And that's between the state and Spence.
No, I understand, but this was just a piece of property that they found that would kind of fit with what they need. That's the only thing that's, because it's not adjacent to it or anything else.
Actually, the original plan to the planning board had, I think, two parcels, it did, it had two parcels, south of the Parkway, and then one to the north side, and then when they were needed, mitigated with the state people.
So, so we are, we are now, we were just talking about putting an acre and a half into conservation land?
This is 3.91, yeah.
But they need, they need a certain amount of acreage to go into conservation, so wouldn't that one...
No, 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 because, because it's, they call it priority habitat, the state, so all the totals are right in this area, so you can't take a chunk of the land somewhere else, it has to be in this priority habitat area, which is online, you can see, I can provide you guys with those maps too. So it has to be within that area, you know what I mean, so...
So my point is, like, regardless if it has an impact on this whole project, we as a, as a town and as a board of selectmen, have not heard from anyone from the state that our, this, our Cassa Ring project may or may not depend on us approving this article at town meeting.
It's not the ring project, it's just, it's A W Perry, just like...
Like, whatever, we haven't heard from anyone.
Anyone from A W Perry? We haven't heard from anybody.
Until we do, I think we should keep it, and be able to chart our own destiny until we hear or...
I mean, we're not in the business of making things easy for a company so that you don't do things.
Right.
Just thinking about like... What's in the best way to throw?
DOT probably didn't notify you guys and say we're putting 30 acres into conservation restriction, you know what I mean, as part of this, because they negotiate with the builders of the Parkway and stuff like that.
If I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we pass this out?
I'll second it.
That the board of selectmen vote to pass this article over?
Did it pass over or not recommend?
Not recommend.
Not recommend, Adam?
Not recommend.
That's fine, um...
I think it would have to come from that committee to say pass over, right?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, that to council, I know with, I know with zoning things, if it's voted down at a town meeting, it can't come up in substantially the same form for two years. Is anything like that in play on a matter like this, council? It may make a difference between...
That's a good question.
Do not recommend versus a pass on, it may make a difference.
I'd have to look for it, I don't know if that one can...
You mean, just for the record, we have...
You're not under a timeline to make a recommendation on that, it's just, you are informed, you've got four articles, you've been informed tonight that one has been withdrawn, two seem to be pretty straightforward, I think, and reasonable, and one is in question, and so they'll be printed on the, three, you know, three of the four will be printed on the warrant in the form that it's, after it's coming, and you have time between town meeting to take a position and get an answer from council on the implications for that.
We prefer to have what we do so it's, when it goes into print, it's actually in the article.
Your recommendations including, and the FinCon's too? Okay.
And this one especially.
Okay, so... So you got a move.
Well, normally what would happen is, an issue like this, which is a selectmen's issues, the FinCon will stand up and say this is a selectmen's issue, we give it back to them.
I see.
So then we'll get up and we'll explain, we'll explain what's going on. It's not that we're against conservation land, like, this came up last year, and, you know, it was another quick deal, quite frankly, and I didn't like it then, and I don't really like it now. If there's something, if there's something going on there, that the state's involved with, and other government agencies are involved in, I want to hear from them. That's, you know, I don't want to just say, "Well, you know, there's some people over there talking about this and they're going to do something."
We'll help you facilitate that.
We'll help you facilitate that as best we can.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may, you might wanna call, uh, uh, A W Perry or Castle Development and they'll have all the details for you or the Spence family.
I will, I, I know them, so.
Any more questions from us?
I know, we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and the, the work you're doing is, you know, you're doing the job and that, uh, needs to be done. And, uh, if we just agree, it's only because we agree to disagree and not, you know, we just, uh, this was last year and there's questions to be answered.
We didn't have an article in, the only article that I remember was in was the, uh, the lease of property and that was just like.
Uh, I think there was a motion on the floor to.
No, it's the solar lease.
The solar lease, so, uh, uh, so it couldn't sell. And that, and that was really a new point because the town had the ability to sell it if we wanted to, according to, uh, the accounting office at that time, I believe. That's what I believe anyway, anyway.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Donald.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, I wanna clarify one there, but, uh, two, what's with the acre and a half in the town park? You don't wanna do anything, you just wanna leave it where it is for now or whatever?
I know, it's gonna be on the warrant.
You're gonna put it on there?
It's gonna be on the warrant, they'll all be, they'll all be on the warrant, I guess all the questions will be there.
Okay.
It's just a question of whether we're gonna recommend it or not.
Yeah.
And now, the only thing I think that the board is questioning.
Just pay three hundred million.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
You're gonna raise your taxes though, if you own the town park. Youth commission revolving account. I'm running up, young lady.
There are even a minute and a half left, so.
I know, all right, make this quick. Um, so I, thank you for, um, waiting for me, I appreciate that. So I sent you an email, letter, memo, whatever it was, um, asking you to increase the revol- our revolving account, our youth commission revolving account, um, it was brought to my attention, I actually thought that the, the number that we voted on at town meeting was the ceiling, how much we can take into that account, I didn't really, uh, understand that it was the expenditure, but now that I do, um, I'm actually here to ask you to increase it, um, to one seventy-five, I think we voted at a hundred thousand. I'm asking for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, I have two full-time employees, their salaries come out of there. Um, all of, uh, anyone else that works for us, uh, part-time, uh, their salaries, their, uh, their cost comes out of there. And then we're, we're rolling around to spring and summer of which, you know, any programs that we do, all of that money comes out of there too. So we're paying vendors, we're paying bus companies, um, you name it, all of our.
So this, this just increases the limit that's, that's in that.
This just increases, yep. Yeah, and then we've, we've actually gone and asked for more money next year. The good news is we're sourcing more people, so, um, so we need to ask for more money to come out of that account.
All right, I make a motion to approve, I'll say, the motion being approved in a second, all the paper.
Great, thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, man, do we have one other issue on the warrants, um, how there is? Uh, 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 like, others? Was it convenient or was it?
I could probably wait till later in the meeting, it was.
Yeah, no, it's just, uh, just kinda giving you guys a quick update as to where we are in this, in the, uh, the budget process as opposed to the warrant and the articles for town meeting. Uh, last week, the week before, I gave, uh, sent out an email, saw the department head and asked them to prioritize their articles, uh, been working with the finance committee going through those and working with Jim as well, going through those articles, uh, what the priorities are. To try to get down to a, uh, position where we can actually fund as many dollars as possible. Uh, as you guys know, uh, after this, we probably have about one point six million dollars of there on free cash. After a special town meeting, I think we went, we went with about, with about one million dollars in free cash, uh, and we had four million dollars worth of requests this year. So there's a lot of, uh, a lot of back and forth, but I think we're at a place where, I think finance committee has a meeting tomorrow night and after they're done with their meeting, we should have a pretty good idea of what the, the final warrant is gonna look like. Uh, we have to go to print as a big boy change, so I think we'll be in a pretty good place after tomorrow night's meeting, finance committee.
Excellent. All right. Look if I can, the juice coming up here. All right, we have, we don't have a, can we have a here yet? Uh, we should do, do. Come on down. Tell everybody your name and.
I'm Karen Maswell, I'm the assistant town accountant for this town sandwich.
I'm, I'm gonna stop the question off, I've, uh, can I ask you a very general question, uh, how did you find Rockland and what made you wanna come to Rockland?
Um, well, that's actually kind of funny, um, I saw the job posting on the MMA website. Um, actually, um, I just graduated from S N H U and my advisor asked me to set up a LinkedIn account, which I already had, and she said it was important to do networking and stuff like that to get jobs, so I, um, I previously went to, well, back up a little bit, last year, I graduated from Suffolk University with my certificate in governmental leadership and management, and in that class, one of the professors was Vernon Lynch, so I actually reached out to him on LinkedIn, who's there, so I connected with him and he actually asked me if I would be interested in this position. So, here I am.
Good, you stole off then?
Um, so why are you interested in this position, uh, it's a two-part question.
Mm-hmm.
Why are you interested in this position, how does it fit, uh, with your overall career goals, as well as why do you feel you'd be our best choice?
Okay, um, so, um, I've been working for the town sandwich for five and a half years. Three years, I worked in treasurer's office and I processed payroll for roughly seven hundred employ- employees. Uh, sometimes it went up and down depending on summer. Um, I took care of all the deductions and health benefits in the office. I currently work in the accounting office as the assistant town accountant and, um, I work side by side with the finance director managing a seventy-five million dollar budget and she's been training me to become a town accountant. That's exactly what my goal is, that's why I'm here today, is, um, I want to have a career as a town accountant where I can utilize my skills, my knowledge and my education.
Small town.
What was the second part, I've, was there another part to the question?
Why are you feeling you'd be our best choice?
Oh, okay, yes, so, um, in the job description, I noticed that there was multiple skills and, um, qualifications that I already have. Um, I, oh, jeez, I reconcile cash with the treasurer every month, I reconcile receivables every month with the collector's office and the assessor's office, I, um, process payroll, I do accounts payable, accounts receivable. Um, I work on the schedule A and the recap and the balance sheet to do free cash, um. Uh, let's see, I work with grants, I've done chapter ninety, um, there's so many things, I can't even think of everything. Um, but yeah, I mean, those are just to name a few of the things that I do do on a daily basis.
Mr. Mullen? Uh, thank you, uh, oh, can you, uh, oh, describe your past experience and, uh, the experiences you have, uh, currently working with the department of revenue? Oh, oh, what's, uh, uh, what is your experience of submitting, um, uh, like reports at the D O R, like D F? Oh, combined balance sheet for the certification of free cash, uh, the tax rate recap in the schedule A.
So, the tax rate recap, um, I actually have a good relationship with our D O R rep, it was Jared Curtis, but now we have, um, Markton, I can't remember his last name. Um, but, um, so anyways, the recap, this was my first year doing the, uh, tax recap, I don't know, actually, it's my second year doing the tax recap, sorry, I apologize. Um, and the balance sheet and the schedule A, I've been doing the schedule A for three years now and, um, I don't find it that difficult to do, they do ask questions at the end to verify some stuff and I answer those questions for them and sometimes there's things you have to fix, you know, but, um, the schedule A is just all of your expenses and your revenues, you know, it shows like your, um, your debt in there, um, your balance sheet is basically your end balance, everything. So your schedule A and your balance sheet almost basically match each other in aggregate and on your balance sheet, that's where you get your designated fund balance to work for free cash.
Thank you.
Karen, this name it.
What experience do you have working with the municipal budget and what do you think the town accountant's role is in the preparation of a budget?
Um, so currently, that's not a task that I'm responsible for, um, our town manager handles the town budget, um, but I do prepare some things for him that he asks for, like, um, if he asks me for a management report that covers all of the expenses and revenues for the prior fiscal year, so he can look at that. And then I address to him accounts that have been overdrawn, so I tell him that he needs to increase the budget for those, that line. Um, I currently, um, when I went to school at S N H U, I worked on a budget analysis where we went through, um, different types of scenarios for budgeting and I had to write up a management letter to the bud- to the management and let them know, um, you know, my findings, what I thought was, would be the best budget for them and, um, that would be my recommendation for that. Um, and then also, when I took the class at, um, Suffolk with the leadership management course, through the, um, I had a finance budgeting class that I took and we went through a whole budgeting process on there, which actually compared, I think it was two or three fiscal years in the beginning and it compared revenues, expenses, um, elastic revenues, um, personnel costs, um, school costs, long-term debts, short-term debt, um, all kinds of different things. And we compared that and then we reached, we, um, predicted out further, two or three fiscal years and then we had to determine if, which line was favorable, unfavorable or marginal. And if it was marginal or unfavorable, I had to write up, um, I had to do like a PowerPoint presentation and, um, show if it was marginal or unfavorable, where we could fix on those things, like, such as, like, I think it was like, for example, school capita, um, I think the example was, um, to, there was declining school students and where they couldn't, where they could, uh, value, it was more like, um, school capita and, let me think about this for a second, it was, um, like the student, the teacher to student ratio, it was something that to look at where you could actually, um, help the cost of that, that line, sorry. I'll think about it for a second.
Mr. Petty?
All right.
Uh, what is your experience with the uniform procurement warrant contracts, including those covered by M G L check thirty B as well as union contracts?
Um, so currently, um, we process all the vendor warrants, bills each week in our office and we audit all the bills and they go through our, our office and we check them for lawful and justification, um, and we also check them for procurement. So anything that is ten thousand dollars and under, we use sound business practices, ten thousand, fifty thousand, we require three written quotes, has to be on the state bid list or we have to have a contract, um, and those are the things that we look for. Um, and then fifty thousand dollars or over, it requires a procurement officer and, um, it goes out to official bidding process for that. Um, and the contracts, all the contracts are kept in our office and then we put them on a spreadsheet so that way we can look at them. And when we process a bill for that, something that we have a contract for, we actually look to make sure that we're not going over the contract. Um, and then all the union contracts as well are held in our office and I look at them occasionally when I'm working on payroll just to make sure that, you know, we're following what the contract says.
The accountant is often, uh, asked to do a lot of different things, wear a lot of different hats, uh, pull the, you know, monthly reports, year-round reports, yada, 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 how do you handle the pressure?
Um, well, I feel like, um, that's one of my strengths, is my time, time management, um, I feel like I'm very efficient with my work. Uh, when we talked about the schedule A and the balance sheet and the recap, I like to get those things done as soon as possible, I don't like waiting till the deadline. Um, as well as like ten ninety-nines, I get those done as soon as possible, because you only have basically a month to get them done, so I usually do them like the first week of January and just get them done. Um, if somebody comes up to me and asks me to do something, I determine if it's, um, important or non-important. Um, but if like my town manager came up to me and asked me to do something, I usually do it right away, same with the assistant town manager, I usually go do those tasks like right away. Um, but, um, I'm always there to help people as well, I feel like, um, when I work with like the accounts payable person, if I'm not doing something and she has like a stack of bills, I'm, I would help her, you know, so. But yeah, I feel like my time management is really good, I'm good at dedicating to.
So, Rockland?
All right, so I, I have quite a few questions on this one. So, uh, I'll ask, I'll ask the question, I'll let you answer them, I got a couple more, so. Uh, what is your experience dealing with the school department and how was your relationship with the school?
Um, actually, we work, um, with the school department almost every single day, they come to our office to bring us bills. Um, I feel like we have a good relationship with the school department, um, I haven't had any negative things to say about the school, um, in general.
How would you, uh, how comfortable are you with muous systems?
Um, I've never used muous before, um, I've used data national when I first started that, uh, the town sandwich and then we converted over to software. Um, I feel like I'm, I'm good with technology and computers and I can learn computer systems really quickly. I have no problem doing that, especially because we went through that software conversion and we actually converted the first, eh, when I was in the treasurer's office, our office was the first one to convert over and I had to put everything into the system, I mean, you can start basically from scratch, so I don't have a problem learning new systems, software.
Uh, what experience you have interacting with the M S B A in managing school building projects?
Um, I don't have any interaction with the M S B A, um, I know that we've had two projects prior, like years ago, um, and we get money from them, but other than that, I don't, we don't, on our end, the school department handles all the school kind of stuff like that. We have a school business office or a, like, business, yeah, finance director that handles all that kind of stuff.
What level of interaction have you had with town departments and finance committee?
Um, I don't go to the finance committee meetings, but, um, on a daily basis, I communicate often with our town departments. There's twenty-seven departments that I communicate with, either on phone, email, however. Um, we have a lot of grants right now and that's one thing that I'm constantly monitoring and making sure that we're getting our, um, reimbursements, because we don't like to have negative accounts at the end of the fiscal year, because then that hits our free cash, um, so I'm constantly monitoring them and I'm constantly getting in touch with them and making sure that they're sending in the reports that they need to, to get the reimbursements that are required.
Would you be comfortable working with finance committee?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
All right, and then final, um, we have a solar field in town, uh, have you?
A solar?
A solar field?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Do you have any exposure to schedule Z credits?
I do, actually, um, that's funny you ask. Um, I was brought into a project with our assistant town manager, because we were having a little bit of a problem with the solar company that we had and when they initially set up the, I'll say the, the solar farm.
Sure.
Um, they came to a P P A agreement with the town and it was like eighteen and a half percent the town was supposed to get the credits and it was supposed to offset their taxes as well, so. Um, initially, when they first started, we were getting all the credits every month and they were paying us. Now, I wasn't in the accounting office at this time, so, um, once the taxes hit, they stopped paying us for credits. So I was probably in the office for about a year and then I got brought into work with the assistant town manager, the finance director, the, um, treasurer and the assessor, we all got together and we talked about how we weren't getting our money and what we could do to improve this and blah, blah, blah. Um, so I actually was in charge of building this spreadsheet, so I tracked all of our solar credits that we received. So I actually had to actually call ever source and get some of our schedule Zs that we didn't have because we didn't have some of them, so I could actually go back to the new time and track everything. So, once they gave those all to me, I was able to build this full spreadsheet, put in the schedule Zs, put in our credits that we were supposed to get and then I worked with the assessor on the taxes. Um, so then, from there, I worked with the treasurer, because they were back taxes that they weren't paying as well on top of this, so I needed the interest amount that they weren't paying, so we could get that. Um, then we got our lawyers involved and then, um, once we got them involved, we used our semi-spreadsheet that tracked it. And then, um, once we got them involved, we used our semi-spreadsheet that tracked everything. Um, and I showed on a separate spreadsheet what they owed for their taxes and the interest and everything, and um, we were able to get, I think it was like fifty-eight thousand for our taxes, and roughly fifty thousand for the credits that they owed. And um, I actually, still to this day, I use my spreadsheet, and I track all the credits, but we hired an outside company to basically monitor, because they were going through bankruptcy. So they were having problems, so we thought, well, it'd best if we just hired an outside company to handle everything, but I work with her when she sends me bits of credits, and I tell her, yes, that's what we should be getting, and, you know, but we get paid quarterly now. We just do it on a quarterly basis, because our taxes are quarterly, so it just washes, you know, it makes sense to just do it that way. But actually, it's funny you say that, because there's, they're behind again, and.
So you can see yourself very proficient?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Very good, so. Mr. Malin, you sure?
Uh, two questions. I like that, I like, I think, oh, like earlier, I like you mentioned like a little bit of experience. Uh, I like forecasting revenues and budgets and um, expenses into the future, uh, is that something, uh, uh, like you think, uh, like you're starting more proficient at, or just in terms of like forecasting, uh, you know, or like helping to forecast like departmental budgets and things like that?
Absolutely, if I was brought into that, I would absolutely feel comfortable doing something like that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and then, oh, oh, like in the account, or like, do you have any like supervisory, uh, like responsibilities? You know, what others, and how many people are those for?
So there's only three people in our office, there's the finance director, there's me, and then there's the accounts payable person.
Okay.
Um, so I basically supervise her, but she really doesn't need any supervision, I mean, she knows her job, she's good at it. Um, but I feel like I'm constantly supervising other departments. And calling them on the phone, and um, for example, when I work on payroll, because I still work on payroll, I like go through all the timesheets, and I tally everybody's time, make sure it matches the cover sheet, and if I have change, I have to bring it to the president's office. I'm constantly calling people on the phone and saying, you know, I'm sorry, uh, this is a mistake, you know, can you redo this? Or have your department head come in and re-sign this, you know? Um, but there's other people that I work with that don't really like to be told, they're more sensitive to that, so I tell them, can you take a second look at this, you know?
Yeah, so navigating that quarterly.
Exactly, exactly, you have to actually, you know, there's some people that are just fine with it, like, thank you so much for seeing that and being my second supervisor, but there's other people that are just more sensitive to the situation.
Can you give a specific example of a time you had to deal with a staff issue or a potential staff issue, and how did you handle that?
Staff issue.
It's a good thing I've been.
I haven't really had anything, um. I can't really think of anything, I'm sorry, I apologize, I haven't really had too many. No, there's not really too much. I mean, other than people not getting me things and me constantly following up with them, but I don't really find that to be too much of an issue. I haven't had like any conflict with anybody, if that's what you're asking, I haven't had any conflict with anybody. But I do constantly uh, follow up with people to make sure they're doing what I ask them to do. But, I'm sorry.
That's alright. So you got a couple, um, customer service is important to the town and this board in particular. Uh, please tell us who your customer would be in this position, and what is your philo- uh, philosophy on customer service?
Um, customer always come first.
Who, who, who would your customer be?
Um, our customers, um, I don't really have any customers, there are employees that come in day-to-day basis, that come in and drop off cash receipts, or drop up, or drop up their bills. Those would be our customers, I don't actually, um.
See the public?
We don't see the public too much. Um, we do have another man that works in our office. Um, and he just started in there probably a year and a half ago, and he gets a lot of, the public comes in to see him, to set up like appointments for um, the upstairs of the town hall, or we have another meeting house that they set up with, so sometimes they come in. Um, and if he's not there, um, that would be some direct contact with the public. But other than that, it's just employees that come in to drop off their bills and their payroll.
What makes you very candidate for this one?
I feel like I'm, I've been trained for three years. I have um, all the skills and qualifications that you're looking for. I did notice in like in your management letter, there were things that you needed to work on, those are types of things that I work on on a day-to-day basis. One of them actually, I think, was something about the fixed assets, and putting that on um, the schedule, um, your balance sheet. And that's actually something that I recently did for the Town Sandwich, and um, we took um, we took our old spreadsheet and imported it into our system, and then we went and reached out to our um, she's an executive assistant for the managers department, and she handles all the insurance. So I took the insurance bill, and I looked at the bill, and I looked at the vehicles and machinery, and um, anything over twenty thousand dollars that wasn't already in the system, I imported into the system, and then I actually reached out to each of the departments, and I said, can you look at your list, and let me know if there's something on this list that you don't have anymore, or something that you do have that hasn't been imported yet. And they did that, and they sent it back to me, so I fixed everything in the system, and then I also looked in to see like our capital projects that we were working on, and I got all those in, and so every time we have a vendor warrant now, I check it for all our fixed assets, and I import everything every week, you know, into there, and then at the end of the fiscal year, I'm gonna import all of our projects that we have, I'm just saving everything to be in, so I have a grand total, and make sure I don't forget anything. Yeah, but yeah, I don't know.
Thank you. Are we all set, thank you?
Is that one other question, can I?
You may.
Okay, uh, like if we were to, after you out of this position, where would you see yourself here in, like, three to five years? How would you envision your role three to five years from now, yeah?
Um, well, hopefully, um, fixing everything on your management report. Um, working with the town manager and the assistant town manager, and working on the budget, something that I'd like to do, I can see myself doing that. And working with the staff, and training them, and um, encouraging them, you know?
Is there anything that you would like to add? Um, this question that we didn't ask, but something that you wanna add?
Um, I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, I did see that you're looking for someone with um, staff development within the county department. Do you support continuing education as a governmental county classes?
Yes, yes, absolutely, encourage it.
You encourage it even for the other staff that's in the county departments? Okay, absolutely, great. And are there any specific goals that you would like to achieve during the next fiscal year?
Do you got a couple of eyes? That would be a one. I frankly think the finances within the town are in relatively solid shape, and we got, and we have everything uh, going rather smoothly, considering the turmoil that we're going through, and we're looking for somebody that's gonna come in and be able to be a kind of a gentler accountant and, and do the job.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
We do, we do have some pending larger projects that, that may be on the horizon.
Yeah.
We're looking at potentially a, a new school and a refinery station.
Oh, nice.
Which would have an impact, but um, overall, town is in feeling.
Yeah, it looks, yeah, absolutely, it does look good, yeah.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, beautiful for you.
Okay, bye.
Excuse us one second, um, just, just state your name, and why are you here?
My name's Elizabeth Sleski, I'm here for the interview for the town accountant's position for Rockland.
But the first question will be, um, how did you find us and why would you like to come here?
Well, let's see. I grew up in Addington, so it's never been far away in my life, I live in East Bridgewater. And I've seen the position hosted three separate times, so on the third shot, so hmm, I might as well apply and see if it's a good fit for me and for you.
Very good.
So, Lopar? So why are you interested in this position, and how does this fit with your overall verticals?
I'm interested in this position because you do have a lot of changes that you're going through right now. A lot of them, I am aware of, personnel changes, things like that. It'd be a good opportunity to start new for the town, and I thought it'd be nice to, on the balance floor of a new new financial aspect, town manager, assistant town manager session for the town. I do live in East Bridgewater, and I do commute to Winthrop every day for work. So, you know, that's a factor.
I noticed that.
Yeah, so it's.
That's a nice ride.
Yeah, it's great.
So why do you feel you're the best choice in this position?
Why am I the best choice? Oh, I have to tell you how great I am, 'cause I'm great. I've been around since two thousand and five in this type of position in the municipality. I started out as an part-time account payable partner in the town of Addington. And I became certified governmental accountant in two thousand and ten. And since then, I have been working with different communities, and I have been with the town of Winthrop since two thousand and thirteen. So at the end of April, I'll be entering my seventh year with Winthrop. So I think I have a lot of experience that can help the community, I know that in Winthrop, we've got um, right now, five enterprise funds, and two hundred and eighty-three special revenue funds, of which, some of them are scholarships. That's a big thing, where you have to watch the scholarships, make sure they don't go in deficit, things like that. You have your school grants, you have the special revenue funds, donations from individuals where they want their money to be spent in a certain way, and you wanna follow laws, so I think I can make a difference here for you.
What's, what's the yearly budget in Winthrop?
Winthrop, with our enterprise funds this year, we're at sixty-one million. And you don't have the enterprise funds that I'm aware of, you have the joint waterworks in Addington Rockland, which I am aware of. CPA, I realize too, you have CPA, I have experience with CPA, just back a few years, but there's all kinds of different things I'll just try.
Mr. Malin?
Oh, can you describe, uh, your experience, uh, your experiences uh, for us, uh, working with the department of revenue? Oh, what's, oh, what has been at your relationships with them over the years? Oh, like, uh, like what's your experiences, oh, uh, submitting the, uh, combined balance sheets, for example, from free cash, uh, tax rate recap, and the Schedule A?
Um, my history has been that I'm trained, and I do all aspects of the statutory recap as well as the Schedule A. The only part I don't touch on the recap is of course the assessing part. But I'm used to dealing with the town parks part, with the um, treasure collector's part, all the miscellaneous forms, just no one I the balance sheets, they just changed the balance sheets last year, so kind of created a little bit of a hiccup for some people, but they're not an issue, and the, the whole trick of balancing your books, because you have to tie to your Schedule A. So you do your balance sheets, your balance sheets look great when you find your Schedule A, they have to balance, they have to be mirrored, they have to look exactly the same. So if something doesn't match between the two, you have a problem somewhere, you have to backfind the problem before you submit to the department of revenue. Martin DiMunner is your department of revenue rep, I know Martin very well. Along with Tom Guilfoyle, who's the local rep here. Martin did come out to, or was my field rep in Winthrop for one year, and didn't wanna go through the tunnel, so that was the end of him, but I do have a lot of experience with the DWR, I have no problems with them, and one of the things that people shy away from is contacting the department of revenue. If you've got a question or a problem, they're one of your assets, they're one of your sources, that's what they're there for. You know, and I have called them, and I have asked for help through the D, through the law, or just through my field rep, things like that, but you take advantage of what's out there, you take advantage of the knowledge.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Naimi?
What experience do you have working with municipal budget, and what do you think the town accountant's role is in the preparation of a budget?
Um, well, a lot of communities are different, but the essential role of the town accountant is to, I teach budget one at our school each year, so my philosophy on the budget is you have to start with your revenues. What are your revenues gonna be, what are you gonna project out? You have to be very cautious not to over-project your revenues, because that's when you end up in a serious issue. Um, and my philosophy is that, when you're doing your budgets, you have a team. You've got your, your selectmen, you have your finance committee, you have your department heads, you have your town administrator, and then a lot of times you'll find, uh, assessing treasure collector. You'll find a lot of times that, um, some of the clerks, lead clerks in the department, or senior clerks in the department are very good at their budgets, they understand what the budgets are, and they'd only help the department heads to achieve that goal. So as far as budgeting, you have to work together as a team, you don't work as a team, you're not gonna succeed, and a budget isn't my budget, the budget is the town's budget. You have to work together, everybody wants something, it's part of life, we all want it all, but we can't always have it all. So you have to work with people and kindly say, we can't do it this year, maybe next year, or we have free cash, we'll put it into the capital fund, so we can do it back in the future. And you wanna preserve your assets that you have now, you know, your employees, remember you're a quitman. And I just make sure that things are going good, and that the townspeople have, because it's their money. It's not my money, it's not, it's Martin's money.
Mr. Petty? What is your experience with the uniform procurement warrant contracts, including those covered by MGL chapter thirty B as well as union contracts?
Okay, um, union contracts, very familiar with, because in my office, I'm also in charge of payroll. So my, my office, which is finance office, is not one that we do the payroll, which is the hottest payroll system. We also have Softwareay, which is our financial management system. The insurances go through this office. As far as procurement is concerned, I am familiar with the procurement, there'd be, however, I am not a certified procurement officer, but um, there are contracts that I read, and I'll say, you can't sign this. I'll send it back, you can't sign this, because this isn't right, send it back, oh, it's legal, or we have to get funding first. We have a procedure where no contract can be entered into without funding in place, that includes grants as well. Because what happens is, so, and signing authority for where I am is the town manager, town administrator is the signing authority, whether or not it's here with the selectmen, I'm not sure. But the best thing you can do is advise people what's available and not available. People sign contracts who shouldn't be kind, sign contracts, because they don't know what the financial obligation is that they're committing to. So that's very important. If I had a question on procurement, I'd go up to my resources, which would include um, DLS law, um, peers, other departments, I utilize the resources that I have, and I'd also go to our auditor, our legal team, that's what they're there for to advise and assist, those things that you need.
Great. Town accountants get pulled all over the place, the treasurer, the administrator, assistant administrator, get questions by all the time. What do you do, and how well do you do under special sanctions?
The office of the town accountant is a revolving door, because everybody needs something, everybody needs it now. So you have to prioritize what's important. Okay, the town administrator came to, the town administrator wants X, Y, Z, but what's your deadline? If I can pass you off, so I can deal with treasure collector, because we're trying to get cash in, because we're trying to reconcile the cash, and you can wait five minutes, I'm gonna ask you to wait five minutes. So you have to prioritize everything that goes on, everything, and departments come in. I feel so the town accountant's office, or the finance office, is a service office. It's a service office to the departments and the supporting staffs. It's a service office to the departments and the supporting staffs. We don't have a lot of interaction with the public, but we do with the departments. They need our help. They walk in the doors because they have a question. And we need to answer that question. If they have to ask a question more once, ask it, or rather have you ask, than make a mistake. And part of the program, or part of the process is training the staff to enable them to answer the questions that departments have. Because if you share your knowledge, they're more valuable themselves to you and to the community as a whole.
I was just going to follow with that, one more time. What happens when one of them says, "I'm elected"?
An elected official? Well, you do have an elected treasurer, an elected collector, and I believe town clerk and assessor.
Right.
Am I correct? Okay.
For the health.
For the health, the special assessor.
I want the assessors.
Okay, oh, you're all elected. Well...
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Elected, elected personnel, elected department heads have sort of a different rule they have to follow. However, being able to work together as a team will keep the team solid, whether or not you're elected or appointed. Because you have to interact, you're not here for your own good, you're here for the benefit of the community and what needs to happen. One of the big things you do when you move into a different organization, whether public or private, you have to gauge who you're talking to. You know, like, I can speak to you in one way, I can speak to you in a different way. But if I speak to you the way I talk to him, it's not going to work. So you need to address your personalities, who's out there, what do they need, what can you give to them, and there's a trust factor. You have to build trust. These people have to trust you and you have to trust them. And that's what you need to do to make it work.
So, Rockland?
Okay, so I have multiple questions here. I'll ask them one at a time. What's your experience dealing with school department and how were your relationship with school?
When I first walked into my current employer, the school department had a big issue with finance office. There was a serious level of distrust. It took me a year and a half to gain the trust of the school department. Now, we talk all the time. I approve all of their vouchers, all their accounts failed, make sure things are in accordance with the law. Any questions that I have, I bring it back to them, say, hey, we've got to fix. We work together as the team to make it work, so trust. And as far as your school's concerned, I believe you have a percentage budget that you do.
Seventy thirty.
Okay. So as far as budgeting is concerned, it's great, except for when they want more. And when they want more, you have to go back to your agreement and say, you want another hundred thousand, we really don't support that, so how are we going to fix this? So it's negotiating, it's working together to come to a reasonable end. But I like school departments. It's going to work together.
What, what experience you have interacting with the MSBA, comparing the school building projects?
Oh, are you starting a school building project? I just finished one. We just, we just built...
Got a meeting tomorrow, so we'll find out if it looks that way.
We just built a ninety-one dollar school project in the town of Winthrop.
Perfect, that's what we're looking to do.
Okay, so it's a, it's a middle high school combined. And they're just finishing up on their football field, which is going to run them about ten million. And then we're starting a downtown revitalization project that's going to run about twelve. So...
So after hearing that, you still interest in the position?
So that's something I hadn't done before.
Any, any experience with MS?
MS, no. However, I have worked with different municipal softwares. Financial software has never been an issue for me, I can just, for some reason, pick it up. And if I can't, I make a phone call. The town accountants, they're all the same, the basics are all the same. Sometimes it's just the reporting aspect that you need to tweak a little bit to get what you need. But the beauty of what's going on here as well is you have a staff in the finance office, Martha was in the audience, who, they know the systems. And if they don't know the systems, then we'll work together to get the system to the way we need it. And you have to rely on the people in your office, the historical knowledge, and not just in the finance office, but other departments. Because there's institutional knowledge that you don't have, why not use something?
What level of participation are you, what level of participation have you had in working with finance committees in relation to the budget number?
I have had a lot of experience. Finance commission up in Winthrop, they meet every two weeks, because we're a council form of government. So we're not a city, but we're a town, having this council. So I provide them with the information they want. When you sit down with your finance committee, you want to have all your ducks lined up. Okay, this is what we're looking at, this is what we're going to see. It's not just you sitting down with the finance committee, it's the team. Okay, police department, come, sit down with the finance committee, present your budgets, school department, present your budgets. You work together to say, this is doable, this isn't doable, and this is why it's not doable. And the ultimate goal is for the board of selectmen, the town administrator, and the finance committee to be on one page the night of meeting. It's very important that everybody works together. Because if you don't, then town meetings can get long.
So my final question, we have a solar field in Rockland. Do you have any, any exposure to the Schedule A?
Well, funny you mention that. Yes. We have just gotten ball dropped. We have been in a solar net metering account for about a year and a half. We just found out we rent because the bills are going to someone who's no longer there and the Schedule A. So yes, I'm familiar with it. And then the question is, how do you deal with it here? Are you charging back for the buttons based on the costs associated with it, or is it your own in-house?
So, you know, generally, the, the credits go to cover all the components, all the buildings in the town. And we have additional credits left over. That's what we're trying to figure out, what to do, how to, how to access those credits.
Okay, you really can't, but that's, that's us. Get down to the, to the nuts later type of thing, but you really can't. You just have to work it so anybody who's getting the credits now gets a piece of the pie, it does. There is a cost to produce those credits, those credits are not free. So then you distribute out those expenses to the departments.
So, Simone?
Oh, do you have any supervisory, like responsibilities in your old, or like in like your previous roles? How have you handled them? How many employees have you supervised and, oh, really, what's been your approach as a supervisor?
I have three direct quotes, real quotes right now. One's my senior accountant, my payroll specialist, and my accountant's payable clerk. And my approach is to make sure everyone knows they're appreciated. Everybody has a role in what we're doing. Educate them. Like, right now, my payroll specialist is on medical leave. So I've cross-trained and my, my payables clerk is assisting with the payroll. So my senior accountant assists with the payroll. We all work together as a team within the office to achieve the goal. And if that means, you know, one person helps the senior accountant bring in the revenues that come from the treasury, or I ask the senior accountant to do journal entries for me. Again, we're, we're all cross-trained and that's to the best benefit of everybody.
Can you give a specific example of the time you had to deal with the staff issue or potential staff issue and how did you handle it?
Mad, we go to staff issues. One of the things that I tend to run into is scheduling vacation time, where everybody wants the same time off. So you can't all take July fourth week off, it doesn't work that way. So I instituted first come, first served policy. So you're first, you get it. And I know the unions have some playing here, but there has to be consideration for the whole department. Disciplinary wise, I really have a good team. If there's an issue that I feel is being discussed that shouldn't be discussed, I'll need open office. I will find a reason to stop that conversation, whoever it's with, and ask the person to come into my office and we discuss and I explain. This is what you do and this is what you can't do and this is fine, you can't do it. Because you're set, especially with payroll, because you're setting us up for liability. And we have to stay out of liability and that's the job. Keep the town out of liability, make sure that we stay on the up and up so that we, we don't end up in trouble.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Petty, so I've got a couple. I think you touched on this a little bit, but customer service is very important to the town in this board in particular. Please tell us who your customer would be in this position and what is your philosophy in customer service?
The customers at this point in time there are a couple. One is vendors who are not paying the bill. They will go to the departments, they don't get their answers. We deal with them, let them know what the status is of the invoices that haven't been paid. And we notify the department that you have to put in this requisition and if you're not going to pay it, we need to know why. You just can't say, I'm not going to pay it. The biggest customer service aspect that we have is the departments. Because they're a daily operation, they need help, everything from the payroll to their accounts payables. I have a situation, how can I handle it? Those are the types of things that you deal with. And then, of course, the town administrator, the assistant town administrator, pretty much those who need the help. And then when it comes down to the board of selectmen, it's up to what the board wants. Some, some organizations will have a strong town administrator, so everything goes to the town administrator. Others will have a strong board and the board will want their information. So I would, in my case, I would coordinate with the town administrator and say, the board's looking for this and you're going to present it. And I would see, see him or her on what was going out, so everybody would know what's being done.
Looking at your resume and looking at your educational background, you see you're in a lot of, a lot of committees, you know, lots of certificates. What I haven't seen is a bachelor's degree.
Don't have one. I grew up in a time that, you know, one of ten kids. So you go to college or you go in your own living. I went to live it.
Okay.
But it was the first time I come to serve as a governmental accountant. I'm proud of what I do and it's also qualified.
Okay. Looking at your current role versus what our role is. It may appear that it may be a potential step backwards on what you are today. Do you look at it that way or how do you see that?
No, I don't look at it as a setback, it's because no matter where, no matter where you go, especially in a community municipality, there's always a level of hierarchy that you report to. So I have no problem, I don't consider it a setback, I consider it to be a great opportunity to work with the new team.
The last one, what makes you a great candidate for this job?
Let's see, I live down the street, I don't fight, I'm nice. I think I answered all your questions. So right now, I'm great, you guys get to decide.
Fair enough. Do you have any questions for us?
The only question I would have is, when would you be going out to make your final decision? Be the next week, two weeks, three weeks, I know a town meeting is coming up sometime in May.
I don't give to the board, we're going to, when, when I'm all done interviewing, I'm going to call the board and see. We may even make the decision tonight. It's going to be quick. It will be quick, it's not going to, we don't, we don't have the luxury of times on our side, if you will. We need somebody who's going to walk in and do the job right away and we have two good candidates to choose from. That's what we're going to, that's what we're going to do, but it won't be two weeks, believe me.
Okay.
Okay?
So we can do it, thank you very much, Keith.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Thank you.
All right. Where do we see the president of the board regarding voting on the Town Accountants? Do we want to wait until officially next week to study the interviews that we did tonight and talk about it? Or do we want to, we thank you, have a choice that we could do it tonight?
So I thought we, I thought we had two very good candidates, so Bernie in the, in the committee and Ben Stacey. You know, I'd heard we'd have some struggles getting some candidates and, or getting qualified candidates. And I think he presented two, two very good candidates. Even myself personally, I, I think I know who I want to go with, but that doesn't necessarily mean that, that everyone else is in that same position.
Yeah, I think to Richard's point, Bernie, great job, Stacey, great job in finding these two. I thought they were both excellent candidates, both very well qualified. I, I like Rich, I do have one that I can currently, I think, favoring right now. So whatever the pleasure of the board is, if you guys want to vote on it tonight, I would feel comfortable voting tonight, or we could hold the executive session before our next meeting. Maybe do it then.
We have to really...
Time is not on our side.
Negotiate in public though, you can't, I don't think you can negotiate in the executive session, anything, whatever what we've done tonight. So it's our, it's our choice if you want to vote tonight.
Well, I guess, does anyone have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? We've got any candidates?
I know, like, I echo both your thoughts. I mean, I like, I thought both candidates were, oh, thank you, superb, thank you, Bernie. I, I also have an idea of who I prefer. The hesitation I have that, I like, if we were to wait is, oh, really, like, losing, I like, a candidate we want. And we've been without, I mean, we've had our back in check here since the end of last June, but it's been a long road. And I think all of us have been looking forward to the day where we have a, like, a full Town Accountant. And I, I'm excited to begin that again. So, I like, I would be more than comfortable moving forward tonight.
Because we are down to two today.
Do we have, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we extend the contract offer to Elizabeth Zaleski.
I will second that. I can motion in the second for Elizabeth Zaleski, all the favor. Extend the vote. Elizabeth, congratulations.
And, and as far as Carrie is concerned, I thought she was excellent. I, I, do you think the position that we're in right now, the more seasoned Town Accountant, Elizabeth has been through clearly everything. I think, you know, her experience with the school building project that she just completed in Winthrop, as well as the downtown, you know, redevelopment Winthrop project.
Really all of it, really.
Everything that they've come together. The way she talked about working with the finance committee, I, I think, you know, right now, I, I think Carrie will, will make a great Town Accountant in, in other community. But I think right now, Elizabeth's experience and what's in the background is what we need in Rockland.
So also the other thing that she really continued to, to talk about was teamwork.
Developing her staff.
Yeah, you know, and, and has, has carried into a little bit, but I'm with, with my, the experience level and in the situation that we're in, she just seems like she'll be able to hit the ground running.
Absolutely.
And for what we need right now, I think she's, she's the right person.
I just have two things. So first of all, should the, I like, and I'm new to this whole thing, but should the motion be, I like, a vote to enter into contract, our negotiations?
That's what I said, yep.
If I turn you off, maybe.
So, oh, you know what?
The motion, if I made through you, Mr. Jennings, was to extend an offer of employment.
That is it.
Now that means it's subject to final, final vetting, negotiating contract terms, et cetera.
Okay, so it's...
Instead of voting to appoint someone, because should talks fall through with the elite candidate, you want the option to go and get a second one. So I think the motion was appropriately framed, Bernie.
Correct, I agree.
I feel comfortable.
Yeah, we went to negotiation, ending, you know, some of negotiations with contract and background checking and everything else.
Can I say one more thing before we vote as well? Really? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm really, I'm giving up and going, hold on.
You really weren't paying attention.
Yeah, I raised my hand, but anyways, I, yeah, I vote for, thank you, Sam.
He's hoping he can avoid it.
All right, no, but we're all here. I like, and Serena's here as well. I like, I just, and I think all of us agree. I like Serena, we just want to thank you for, I like, everything that you've done. I like, you've always done a real job.
A really good job.
Yeah, Serena's attention to detail was unparalleled.
You've helped everything, like, you continue to hold everything together and I just want to, like, you know, that we know it's been a crazy nine months for you, like, and we really appreciate all you do, so.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thanks a lot.
Moving on. All right. Next is the Town Administrator Committee, who's going to present us with some new people.
How are you?
Don't get nervous, yeah, don't get nervous.
First of all, I've done this. Thank you for kind words on the town accountant. I thought we had a good, we actually had a number of good candidates that we interviewed. I think the two that you had before each night were both excellent candidates. And so couldn't have gone wrong either way. I think the board did a good job with its questions throughout the, I mean, we caught the second person for the entire thing. But I thought the board did an excellent job with that. We have three candidates for you for town administrator. We've been busy with that as well. We had a number of people and I meant to walk in and I meant to check on the total number that we had. I think I conveyed that at some point in time today. We interviewed, I believe it was eight people. Narrowed it down to three outstanding candidates for you. And if I could, I will hand you out the packet, similar to what we have for the town accountant.
How many people applied?
That's the number I'm trying to
Was it twenty-nine?
I think it was something like that.
And you only picked eight to interview, how did that?
Yes. The first candidate we have is Anthony Ansaldi. Anthony is currently the assistant town administrator in the town of Littleton. He's actually been the interim town administrator for the last several months. And he's relatively, this is his first municipal administrative position, but he had served for thirteen years with the town of Brookline in their public safety departments as their business manager, where he was involved with gate day operations, administrative operations, with the public safety elements, law enforcement, fire, to the expertise of those people. So he handled the business operations, where he was involved with procurement, grant writing, managing budgets. And as you can well imagine, for clients, public safety departments are pretty substantial budgets, pretty complex budgets, given the contracts and other issues associated with those departments. Prior to that, he was in similar finance administration positions at the New York State Sheriff's Office, Department of Revenue. He recently completed the, within the last four years, the Suffolk MMA Local Government Certificate Program. And I believe Carrie, Carrie did the same thing at the financial program. He's actually gone on and received his master's degree from Suffolk University in Public Administration. So he comes highly recommended by people out of Brookline as well as in Littleton. And he's anxious to really take the next step in his career. Littleton's been a good opportunity for him, but he wants to be an administrator himself. In Littleton, he has had the opportunity to immerse himself in other elements beyond sort of the backroom type of functions of budgeting and administration. He's involved in economic development, works functions. And again, I think he was able to speak quite well during his interview with the screening committee on his, his interest in branching out more into those areas. But he's also the expertise that he's already developed around that. The second candidate is Michael Gallagher. Michael has been, he lives nearby in Waymouth. He's been watching this position very closely because he's interested in the position. He's currently the town administrator for the town of North Attleboro, which is interesting, they recently went through a change in the former government there, passing a charter. But he's very interested in this position and has town administrator there for the past three years. He's been involved in all aspects of the, the operation. Very strong budgeting, very strong collective bargaining experience. He's done quite a bit of grant writing, involved in the capital planning efforts. He went there after spending seven years as the director of administrative services in the town of Waymouth, where he worked closely on really all aspects of the, you know, working in Waymouth with the mayor. They rely upon the professional staff to handle the day-to-day operations. And he served in that capacity overseeing the, a number of different departments within the town. So that's, he does have all sorts of good tech, extremely good technology experience with private businesses in Boston as well as with the New York Times. So he's got some good, strong experience that he can bring to the organization. The third candidate is Douglas Lapin. Doug, the assistant administrator in the town of Sandwich. So he's, he's been there now for about fourteen years. Sandwich is an interesting community in terms of the role of the assistant town manager there is really the chief administrator, well, I wouldn't care about chief operating officer. He's responsible for the overseeing the departments and working with the town manager with the day-to-day activities of the town. And the manager serves more of a strategic role. Having him in place allows the manager to be part of the bigger goal-setting experience of the community and the day-to-day operations lie with the manager. Like one of your other candidates, he's anxious to take the next step in his career. After fourteen years in Sandwich, being part of that community and raising a family there, he's ready to move to a new position and comes with a great amount of experience in all aspects of municipal government. All of them have had excellent references. They're all seen as being key parts of their organization. And I think they'll give you a choice, which is what you want. It's who you, to, you know, all highly respected within the profession. There'll be good choices to who you want for your next town administrator. So packets are there, give you the references that we received. They've all passed their criminal history background check as well. And I think the next step is really for the board to conduct the interviews. And we need to set a date to do that.
We have a plan on interviews?
I The game plan, well, that's okay.
Well, I don't see why we should wait. I mean, the resumes are resumes and go over them. And if anybody has questions, you can call, you know, if anybody
If I may on that, Mr. Chairman, the, I'm obsessing over the eighteenth and anything last minute that you might have to do for town meeting. It's your, it's next Tuesday's meeting. You might have a last minute issue or two that really needs some attention. And is it possible to have a Saturday morning interview or something like that? A fairly, so, you know, meet for the express purpose of having the interviews. Ian, Bernie, I, last week's meeting, I talked to the board. I told them of the phone conversation you and I had. We would, we would love to, you know, if the present hasn't started, we would nevertheless love to introduce that party to the public at town meeting. Now that's a little less than thirty days from now. You sound anxious to go. And here I am, kind of holding you back on next Tuesday, you know. Please don't.
To that point, right, that's what I was thinking, right? So a town meeting for us is what, May sixth?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so if I'm looking at the calendar, we have a meeting next week, the sixteenth, scheduled meetings.
Yeah.
We do have the twenty-third and the thirtieth.
I can only see the twenty-third.
So we have the thirtieth available before town meeting, so we can give
Now the thirtieth is tomorrow, I think.
We have a different day.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that's right. Well.
I'm flexible. I'll be tired, it's like, come any day.
Is that true, Mary? Yes, all right, you can go now.
I would make it, I would make it your only, you should plan on about three hours to do the interviews. So I would, I would plan on that type of time commitment. I'm looking at my schedule here and I have, I assume you'd like to be here. But, so I have a few conflicts in there, but I, you know, work around, I try to work around the board's schedule.
What about, do I say the eighteenth?
The eighteenth?
Yeah.
That's a bad one for me.
I have to be
I have to be in power that night. I mean, I have the seventeenth, the seventeenth, the twenty-second, the twenty-fourth.
What about twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, I'm in Dedham.
Well, tell Dedham you're in Rocco. No. Twenty-second might work, Monday the twenty-second.
I have an idea.
Works for me.
Does Monday the twenty-second work, right?
Yeah, but I've, I don't know, that idea won't work. I was gonna say, what if we punt the warrants up to the eighteenth and then meet them?
Sixteen. But no, because the warrant has to be finalized.
The constable is gonna post it. We've already arranged for it.
Sorry, I was thinking aloud.
The twenty-second, I can, if that would work.
Twenty-second, yeah. It'll work, that's on my day.
Okay.
They all work for me, I like.
What time?
What time?
Well, we need three hours, so let's do six o'clock.
Six, seven, and eight for the interviews?
Yeah, well, it works for me.
Okay.
Carrie?
As you go through the, what I'll do before then is we'll get you some questions, some draft questions that you can take a look at. And you all have my contact information. I believe you all know how to track me down. If not, Jim knows. And if you have any specific questions about the candidates that you want to talk about or about the questions you want to ask, feel free to reach out, email, phone, and I'll be there to help you through that part.
We'll work together with you to listen to questions like
Yes, something that went unsaid before, before the meeting, Selectman Penny, he commented that, I think you said that the town accountant questions were spot on. Stacy is the primary, the principal author of those town accountant questions. It was not in, Bernie's scope there, but Bernie was kind enough to review them after, after them being worked up. So, so that's that, but.
I didn't even know that Stacy said that.
They were, they were excellent questions. I may be contracting up Stacy.
Excellent. Thank you so much, you did a great job.
Thank you, very good. See you.
She's gonna be fine and hopefully can work out a deal over there. Either one of them would have been.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think I agree with the sentiment that Carrie will have another position very soon.
That won't be long.
All right, great, thank you. See you later.
Town administrator's report. Just one item, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I haven't been doing much of this. Highway bids, Mr. Chairman. The, the bids were opened just a couple of days ago. I think in part five of your books is a very sophisticated document showing you the bid results. And as for hot mix asphalt production and paving, the low bidder, Mr. Chairman, in the recommended contract award by the highway superintendent is to T.L. Edwards, one hundred whales ad in Avon. And given all the quantities that were provided, the low bid is four hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars. Again, they had a, they had a low bid by a significant sum.
Twenty percent.
As you could see, yes. And Dave has prior work experience with T.L. Edwards. They are in the area, which is an advantage. You know, geographically, they're closer, the plant is closer than either Saguas or Plainville. So even if the pricing was, you know, was close, I think you'd want to look at geography too.
Right, yeah.
But everything is weighing in your, in your favor here, so the recommended bid.
We don't want to have to go to finance.
Precisely. Is, is T.L. Edwards in the, in the estimated amount? Remember now, this is based on estimated quantities submitted, you know, to the, four hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars.
Do you need a motion, Mr. President?
I, it is an action item, yes, please.
I made that motion to award the hot mix asphalt production paving bid to T.L. Edwards.
Second that, I have a motion in the second, anyone with discussion? All in favor? That's a vote, thank you.
And for construction services and equipment rental. Equipment rental, I'm told is a new wrinkle. There's, you know, sometimes we can, through this contract, we'll be able to, you know, to access specialized equipment that, you know, we wouldn't use so frequently. It wouldn't justify a cap out purchase by us or in the like. So the, the low bid, Mr. Chairman, the low qualified bid is, is mass pavement in the amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The Loops bid, as you can see from the margin note, they, they, there was a, there was a long menu of items to bid on and don't be misled by the low vote total by Loops because they didn't bid on eight items. And they were, bidders were required to bid on all of them. In fact, it's pretty evident that at least one, maybe, maybe both mass pavement and PA vendors. Dave knows that they don't have a certain equipment, but they went out and ponied up with another company to submit this for big purposes. So he's happy and if, he's happy, I am. If we both are, I hope you are.
I make a motion to accept the, the construction services and equipment bid of Max Edmond to two hundred twenty-two.
The motion in the second, anyone with discussion? All in favor? That's a vote.
Actually, one thing not, I'm not printed. We did open the price proposals at the sewer plant this morning. There was, I, I know I told you earlier today, Mr. Chairman, I'm very impressed with the process that, that the sewer commissioner and the consulting engineers went through in renewing or seeking services from July one forward. The current, the current operator of the sewer plant, they're now named Sewers. It's not who you hired fifteen years ago. You know, bigger companies gobble other companies. I think this is probably the third or fourth generation since you made your initial contract award. But I can assure you that it was a lawful fare and more thorough than I probably could have expected. Their, their search on this. It is true that Sewers was the sole bidder on the project. But don't, don't let, don't get fooled by, you know, those optics. It's a, it's a very qualified company. The scope of services has actually grown in a couple of significant areas. And when the price proposals were opened, the cost difference is negligible from, you know, from this year to to the next contract years upcoming. The proposed term of the contract, Mr. Chairman, would be similar to the one just ended. A five-year contract period with options for five-year renewals. So it could go, you know, as long as fifteen, as long as fifteen years. And since chapter thirty-B limits contracts to three years, it is necessary, and thirty-B does allow this, for town meeting to authorize terms longer than three years. So this will be a warrant article. And between now and town meeting, all the contract documents and things like that will be prepared. The sewer commissioners are legally unable to enter into this contract until town meeting authorizes them to, to meet this, to meet this term. uh, to meet this, uh, to meet this term, so, um, they'll be making that award, uh, in executing it after town meeting, assuming that we have, uh, have positive actions. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Um, next is Selectmen, we, we, we pull up here, uh, anyway, the views and comments of the people, yeah, comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the board selecting, and are the opinions and comments of only the individual. And Mr. Martin?
Beginning me, um, two quick things. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to, um, actually thank the members of the town administrator screening committee, um, for their work over the past, uh, six or seven weeks or so, to recommend, uh, the finalists, uh, that were presented, uh, to us this evening. We really had, uh, just some refreshed plans. I'll really press the finalists, I'm looking forward to, um, as all of us are interviewing them. Uh, the second thing I wanted to just, I'll throw out there, and I understand we repressed the time earlier, uh, but I'm looking at, uh, some of the proposed warrants, um, and also, um, uh, based on information, I think we've all heard over the past, uh, few weeks regarding economic development, um, in our town and how we approach that as a town, and frankly, uh, like how other boards, uh, who we appoint also uh, deal with the same things that help us achieve, uh, hopefully, uh, shared goals. Um, Alec, I was wondering if it might be possible to, um, invite the zoning board in here, um, for like a joint meeting in May? Um, our different, a few things, um, our, the Wendy's, um, uh, frankly, decision, um, uh, uh, in the past few months, that, um, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same, uh, page about. Uh, there's also a proposed article, a town meeting warrant article that, um, uh, is now gonna come before the town as, uh, a resident petition, uh, that is also related to another decision, uh, the zoning board made, and I just, oh, you know, we're trying to do all these things as a town and we should really be coordinated with them, and frankly, the fact that, oh, you know, we, oh, you know, we squandered an opportunity with Wendy's, um, that's really concerning to me. Um, oh, you know, um, based on the revenues we were got from that, and frankly, I always wanted fast food coming out of Route Three there, um, and now that won't be possible. But, um, I, uh, but frankly, I think, Alec, we should really have like a joint meeting to make sure we're all going in the same direction, and if not, oh, what we can do to change that frankly, so. Um, I know we're crazy now preparing for town meeting, but Alec, after that, Alec, I know, I'll be also all the town administrator. Our goals, which I have not done my homework on either, but, um, um, Alec, if you could try to set stuff, uh, sometime in May.
My Irish policeman dad would freeze you in his, in your tracks right now with a glare.
Why?
Well, you didn't do your homework, yeah.
So, so am I.
I, yeah, I'm, I couldn't, you know, I'm not a good imitation of, uh, of my dad, I'll strike that kind of fear in people. But I'm, but I'm watching.
Thank you, so. That's all I.
No, I agree, I do agree with that, that the zoning board, um, reappoint them. You know, so it's our fault. If we appoint them and they're not doing what town wants, then it's our fault, and we have to make changes. If it means not appointing people or reappointing people or whatever, that's what we have to do. I just don't think the zoning board should be as important as they seem to think they are, quite frankly. And, uh, you know, that's gonna cause a little disturbance in the force, but you know what? I'm not afraid to make ripples because, uh, in the end, it's the town who either benefits or suffers from decisions made by people that we appoint. And if they're not, they don't appear to be working for the town's benefit, then it behooves us as a, as a board to make that change. So we appoint, so we can outappoint, or whatever we have to do to get their attention that we wanna work together for the benefit of the town and not for the benefit of individuals within, working within the system. And I'll just stop the break there before I really carry away. Uh, you know, it's just upsetting to me that people make decisions, um, that affect the town and just, you know, we appoint them, we don't even hear about them. They'll come back and say, hey, you know, we, we got this going on, we, we, you know, what's your opinion? No, we don't get an opinion. They take the opinion and, and say to everybody else, sorry, you know, we don't, we're not sharing anything with you. And, uh, quite frankly, that's wrong, and I've been railing against the zoning board for a long time, and I think that we need a major change, and I see that change coming. So, just so they'll know, I wanna let them know that, uh, you know, we're disinterested with, with what's going on within the town's borders that we need revenue and we have access to revenue, and they're cutting us off. And I don't like it, so. That's my opinion, the rest of you guys can have whatever opinions you want, but I think that we bring them, ask them to please show up, and if they don't show up, then we're, we're gonna have an issue.
Mr. Chairman, does this segue somehow into the, um, I see in Overlake District, some Overlake District, uh, uh, material here, is the zoning board related in on town meeting related, so? Okay, so it's fair game for discussion tonight on that. Okay, 'cause I believe there's a representative present on there.
Are you done? I'm done. Mr. Diamond?
Are you done?
I don't think he is.
I just wanna echo what my colleague said, and thanks Stacy and Bernie, and both the search committees represented great candidates to us, um, both the town accountant, and now we'll be seeing the town administrator finalist, so excited for our town accountant, and I'm looking forward to the interviews in a few weeks. I also wanna congratulate Tom Henderson, who was, um, elected, I think, right, or appointed as the chairman of the S R A. Um, looking forward to working with him over in San Diego.
Mr. Penny?
Um, election this Saturday, eight to eight, a lot of contested races, please come out. Um, same sentiments, uh, the committees for both the, uh, town administrator and the town accountant, uh, work that Stacy Callahan has done, um, the committees that we were able to put together, uh, I think are some of the best committees that this town has ever seen, and, uh, and the talent, um, in those selection committees, uh, that helped us, uh, attract some good candidates, so thank you very much. Um, continuing the, uh, the positive trend, uh, that the town is seeing. Um, to echo the chair, um, I think this has been going on for too long in this town. Uh, people in, uh, some positions of power or what they feel are power, um, feel that they can do what they want to do. And they lose sight of what their responsibility is. When you take on the role, um, of volunteering, whether it's elected, whether it's appointed, you're here for one purpose. That's for the townspeople that put you in this position. And unfortunately, I think a lot of, several people have become complacent in those roles and have lost the, the sight of why they originally were in there. Um, and to the chairman's point, it's our responsibility now as a board, uh, to make sure that these changes continue, uh, and these, um, these practices are stopped, so. Looking forward very much to have the zoning board, uh, in attendance.
Mr. Alvin?
Uh, I'll just echo the sentiments of my colleagues, um, very happy with our town accountant choice, very happy with the, uh, the process, uh, for the town administrator. Look forward to that, um, and I agree with Rich, Larry, and Mike obviously. Uh, we went through a lot last year, and, and I think we saw who we, who we were and who we wanna be, and, and I think some of those similar practices are, are continuing uh, on different boards and committees, and I think it's up to us as the leaders of the town to kind of just get everybody on the same page as we are and, uh, move the town forward in the same direction together, so, that's it.
I'll have no comments, can I? I'll keep it quiet and, uh, just say, uh,
It was early.
I wasn't my trip, yeah. So really, uh, the town is really moving in a great direction. Um, we have, uh, three new people in the, well, two in the room now, one that we just, we're going to try to make sure we can get a contract with, that looks like, um, they're gonna fit right in at the town of Rockland and, and, and jump on the fanrider to get things rolling. I, uh, see enthusiasm, we have two good candidates tonight. Uh, the Irish people did a great job, quite frankly, in bringing us, uh, two top candidates to choose from. Uh, it was very difficult, it's hard to say, uh, no to one person and yes to another. Uh, but that's what they pay us to do, so, we'll do that, so. Everything is going well. Town of Rockland is a great place to live and raise your families, so don't be afraid to come here. Motion, Adweber?
This gentleman, uh, oh, yes. In part two of your book, I didn't, uh, or there's a, a correspondence with Sullivan, can I come up with?
Penny, I'm Walter Sullivan, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, so, we are representing the, uh, petitioner of the citizen's petition, uh, for the Overlake District. Um, the genesis of this arises, as I think the board knows, from an effort by Webster Park Nursing Home to try to get cars off Webster Street, all the way from the post office beyond their facility, they, they believe it's been a dangerous situation for a number of years. Um, we spoke to the fire chiefs, police chiefs, and the D P W, um, and got support from them on, on our idea. Um, the nursing home acquired a property across the street where they proposed to have employee parking, which would allow more spaces available in the nursing home and take cars off the street. The problem is, is intensified when the post office is open. And the fear is, in the winter, people coming in between those cars are really at high risk. Um, most, a significant number of our employees are Rockland residents, a lot of our nursing home people and, and people who visit them are Rockland residents, and so we thought it was in the public interest to do that. Uh, we tried two permitting efforts, which, which were not successful. Uh, we then spoke to some citizens about getting together on a citizen's petition, and that's what you find before you. We're concentrated in the R four district, which would allow by special permits of the planning board, um, to have parking when it's not adjacent to your property, but it could be across the street. The special permit vehicle would require us to enter into some type of conditions. And what we had talked to the zoning board about, um, would be having a, a crossing guard there during the shift changes. It's twenty-four hour operation, so every eight hours, we would propose to have a crosswalk, so those are the sort of things that the permit granting authority could have. It wouldn't just be pass this and we could park where we want. Um, and we think it's in the, it's in the public interest for safety. I think the police, fire, and D P W will support that at town meeting, and so that's, that's what we're trying to achieve.
What's all about?
Well, um, so we were denied a variance, uh, by the zoning board appeals.
And what was the reason?
Uh, uh, that I guess it was a hardship that they didn't really see that, uh, had not been created by the nursing home, and they thought there were other ways we could have solved it. Um, I think it's sort of what they said, it was a four to one vote. We then proposed a special permit, which required us to put a building on the site, and then we could have ancillary parking. We got a majority, unfortunately, it was three to two, we were required to get four to one. And for purposes of full disclosure, both of those decisions are in suit, um, currently, um, against the town. Um, so, the reasons for it, um, I think that there are members of the zoning board of appeals that believe that parking should be adjacent, not across the street. I thought the conditions we proposed would ensure safety. Um, we would've made it employee only, um, because if we pull our employees' cars off our lot, more people can go into our lot.
Right, you're not gonna need that for, for people visiting or saving that for your neighbors, yeah.
Right, um, so that, that was it, I really can't, in all fairness, Mr. Chairman, I don't wanna speak to what the zoning board's, um, rationale was, they just denied it both times.
Guys, I have one question, Mr. Sullivan, um, Alec, the rationale for the Overlake District, rather than Alec, pursuing just, Alec, the special permit? Alec, I'm just naive to this, would there be any way to, uh, 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 frankly, like the overlay district for the whole area? Alec, I understand what you're trying to do, but the overlay district for the entire area has, I kind of have concerns, but it's just, Alec, it raises attention. Alec, are there any other ways, Alec, short of going back to the zoning board, Alec, to do some type of special permit thing through town meeting?
I don't know of any, so there's two ways, I think, generally, that you look on, um, amending award bylaw, amending the, the town bylaws. One is the way I'm doing with the overlay district. The other is you just change the language and allow it by right. I happen to know your town council doesn't like that way. Um, I, I, I do a lot of permitting in Norwell and Marshall as well, and I agree with him, and his position is that it has unintended consequences.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the overlay district is sort of a better way, but you have to make sure you're not violating any type of spot zoning. I'm very confident by making this district the way we are,
I agree.
which is to identify need that the city, that the town has. Um, that, that, that I think the three most important people agree, the town has, the fire, police, and, and D P W. So that doesn't just benefit us, it benefits the town at large, so we're pretty confident about that. Um, the only other way that I think we could achieve, um, what you talked about is, you know, some type of resolution of our pending cases with the Z V A. But it couldn't be through town meeting, it would have to be a remand back.
Yep. So one of those, uh, one of those departments happens to be here, so, Mr. Duffy, would you like to comment on what your, what your thought is on this?
Uh, Mr. Penny, I,
Chief Duffy, sorry.
Scott's fine and awesome. There's definitely a, a parking issue and a traffic issue on our left street. I think anything we can do to alleviate that issue, um, you know, there, there is a plan in place. I think if we can get in on that plan to be able to set some limits to it, and, and also, um, you know, make, make it a safer street, because it, it is down to a one-lane street, uh, many, many, many hours of the day there now.
And it's a street that you guys use daily often, yeah.
It, it is probably, uh, our major response route, yes. So it, it, it is a congested area, and, and even with a, even if you were driving a, you know, a, a smaller, you know, compact car, it, it's still a tight issue, so I think anything that we can do to help alleviate that, that problem.
Oh, uh, let me ask you a question, now. If, if you have a parking lot over there, how many, how many people, uh, your building parking there versus the, the, uh, post office? I mean, how are we gonna eliminate traffic on that street if we still have people parking in the street all day for the post office? And, you know, I, I understand the purpose, and I'm actually all for it, but I just want you to, you know, give us a, a, for instance, how it's really gonna help the overall traffic situation within that area. Parking over there with the, with the, uh, post offices, you know, they're the ones that don't have the parking. You know, I, I, and you guys need it too, don't get me wrong, I'm actually all for that, but I just, you know, there's, there's the actual situation itself uh, needs further involvement with, you know, the, the post office or whatever. You know, somewhere we can get people off the street, but it's very difficult there, and it does become dangerous because people up out of their car, they don't look behind, they run across the street.
So how many parking spots do you have?
We propose, okay, so,
No, how many do you currently have?
You know, I do, and I don't have it off the top of my head right, right now, um, it, it's full. Uh, in, in terms of availability, not much.
Cause I, I,
I went over sixty-eight, but that, that is from like being a year ago in front of the Z V A, but I don't recall.
Employees take up most of the parking spots.
There's fewer visitors than you might expect, that's true, and none of our residents drive.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it is probably mostly employees. Um, it would be better if we could get all the employees in one lot, and I, I don't know if this is to your question, Mr. Chairman, we would agree to any type of conditions where, you know, we restrict it to employee-only parking, and we monitor it by video camera, fence, and we're willing to have a security guard there during the shift changes and really police it, because I think that's important.
An employee sticker on the windshield.
Yeah.
Something simple or something, just so that it doesn't become an issue that some others can use against you
Right.
and, and the nursing home. I mean, I, I understand the need for nursing homes and, and I understand the need for the employees for their, and to have people come and visit. You know, when you're sitting in a nursing home and, and nobody's coming to visit because it's too much of a parking issue, it's too hard to get in and out of there, blah, blah, blah. It takes away from the quality of life, and so many of people within those buildings have a lesser degree hold on the quality of life, so anything that we can help them with, visitors, uh, you know, it makes a big difference, I notice when we visit, uh, former selectman, Mr. Chad- I noticed when we visit, uh, former selectman, Mr. Chaffey, you know, he's a prime example, but if you went from, uh, you gotta, you gotta talk to him, get him, get him excited and, and get him, you know, laughing and giggling a little bit, and rather than being depressed because they're, they're locked in the situation they can't get out of, you know?
I agree.
So, we're all for it. Any questions to the board?
Not for me, no.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
Yeah, you too.
Anything else under the docket?
I think I said this.
I think it, all right, entertain a motion for, yeah.
I need the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Your motion in the second, all in favor, Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Miss Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. O'Laughlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan says yes also. Thank you very much. Glad you made the first meeting.